I'd like to call the Brunswick County Board of Commissioners regular meeting to order for August the 19th and recognize Commissioner Williams for our invocation and a pledge.
You could stand if you're able. Father, we come together as grateful to be free people in a free society and do the people's business and for those that are here to express their opinions, we thank you for the freedom to do so. We ask that you would guide us in everything that we do here tonight and keep everyone here safe as they travel home. We also ask for your protection on those men and women in uniform and EMS first vehicles and other places who sacrificed themselves to protect us. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, unified, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we'll move right along. Are there any adjustments and to the agenda?
I have one. Under board appointments, I'd like to remove the Health and Human Services Advisory Board appointment and the Substitution Addiction and Mental Health Commission appointment and table those to the next meeting.
Okay.
And Ms. Chairman, under consent, I'd like to remove item number 16 further aside.
Item number 16 for further step.
I'll move approval with those changes.
Okay.
Hello, I'm sorry.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the items? Hearing none, all in favor, right?
Aye.
Very good. All right, so that brings us to the our next item, which is public comment. And as you entered the chairman today, there was a sign up sheet outside the door for public comment. I do have several individuals that have signed up. We have a, you have an opportunity to have a three minute opportunity to provide us with the information of concern to you. There's a timer on the screen. I would ask that whenever your time expires, that you go ahead and wrap up and complete your comments, because we only have a certain amount of time allotted to public comment. Just again, it is your time. We ask that you keep it simple and orderly. I would ask that you be respectful for others so that we can move down the list. Hold your applause and comments after the speaker has finished. It is not a Q and A or a town hall, but if we feel like that staff needs to have direction or be provided with direction on a certain topic, then we'll certainly do that. If you have any items that you choose to give to the commissioners or you would like for us to review, we would ask that you provide those to our clerk and the clerk would make sure that we each received a copy of it. So having said that, as I go down the list, I will try to do the best I can on names. But if you, if you would, when you come to the podium, if you'll provide us with your name and your address and and so we'll start with, I believe the first one on here this afternoon is Marilyn Meto.
My name is Marilyn Meto. I live at 7721 Morgan Creek Road in North Carolina. I operate more for wildlife rescue. And where is the clock?
It should be right on the screen. It's running. You've got a green screen now and it'll change colors on you.
Officials were creating a vision of our area that no longer exists. New homeowners have promised a lifestyle that is a healthy environment. The ocean as the main attraction. But they are not being told that the cost of living and the crime rate is increasing every year. They are not being told that our water is not collectible. There is not enough medicine, staff, and infrastructure that is needed. Our land is being stripped, our wildlife is being displaced, and it's become dangerous. There is no longer any co-linking of humans and wildlife as wildlife is being forced into our neighborhood and onto our porch. Going out at night, walking our dogs or having our children play in our backyard is dangerous because of the decisions these animals have nowhere to live. It is dangerous for me to go out back at night to attend to injured animals, which when I have a bear on my front door. Never in 17 years have I seen a bear in or around my neighborhood and it's because of the human displacement. They don't have that anymore. There is no longer any conversation between the developer and the planning committee to set aside green space that is interconnected so that animals have a space to exist. During a recent clear cut and burn, a three day old farm was rescued and now suffers with some beer burns all over its length to the point that the gelatin has melted all its thugs. In the past, the farms that we've dealt with, there generally are situations where the doors were struck by cars. But in the last two years, we are so overwhelmed with injured animals that require medical care that most veterinarians cannot assist. We don't have large beds here. We cannot house or feed them. It's costing me over $100 a day. These animals are literally in pain and they're suffering. This has gone from part time to 20% volunteerism, which is impossible when there's only a handful of licensed rehabbers in Brunswick County. This burden that the county has placed on professional licensed organizations is serious. I do not feel, I, excuse me, I do not see any developers paying fees when they obtain their permits to help our environment. They are destroying it with no repercussions. If the developer has enough money to clear cotton bill, then they should have enough money to have the debris pulled away and recycled to mulch. There's two facts I do know, that your decision has changed the quality of life for all citizens, all of them in the Brunswick County. Plus, when the developers are gone with our and done with our area, they won't be looking back. And we as citizens, it's our civic duty to act with a conscience. Thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn Harris, Mary Ann Harris.
My name is Mary Ann Harris. 8735 Homestead Trail, Ash, in the county. Since our last meeting that I was here, a dog has died. It suffered from a heat stroke. Its organs shut down and had a new therapist. Prior to that, we had the Husky situation, which we all know of. That dog suffered for weeks, interacted somebody with no shelter, no shade, no access to fresh water that it could drink. After five calls, nothing was done for that dog. The only reason anybody went over for that dog was because I had 30,000 outraged people that want relief for that dog. And then they went over and put a tarp and gave the dog water. Because it wasn't charged with animal cruelty, I think, promised me they would look after and check on the dog. But no one ever has. So we don't know if that dog is dead or alive. We don't know if it's still living and suffering outside of the heat. And that's because nobody had filed up. They said they had our phone number, but it would be harassment if they were to call them. At this point, I feel that I don't know how many more times I have to come here to ask for a shade. The attorney told me that the decision was that he were going to let the officer decide whether or not a dog's in distress. That's unacceptable and it wasn't called up in court. And we need the word shade in that ordinance. It needs to stay. The dog's water and shelter must be provided in a shaded area, whether it's natural or artificial shade, as a tarp or a roof. In New Hanover, which I spoke with the lieutenant today, they don't have this problem. Because all outside dogs have a requirement of specific space, specific type of shelter, and require a roof of some sort. In our area, we know that these outside, many people keep their dogs outside. And they're out in rain, they're out in the wind, storms, they're out in extreme heat and in 20 degree weather in the winter. I think as far as the advisory board, this is the second issue I was addressing, we need that more than ever. Every shelter and a rescue is full. We have hundreds of cats and kittens literally find shopping centers, many of them not spayed or neutered. They're suffering with fleas, worms, ticks, kittens coming to us, maggots crawling on them. It's disgusting and it's very, very sad. We need to have an advisory board so we can work with the public and we can work with each other and try and solve some of these issues. So we can educate the public on staying neutered, on adopting, fostering, and come up with solutions. Our county is better than this. And I want to ask everybody here, if a dog is left out in extreme heat with no water and no shade, access to shade, is that animal cruelty? Why are we not getting this done?
Thank you. I also continue to look for some correspondence from the county attorney in the next step. Next personal list is, I believe it looks like Lola Smith.
Laura.
Laura, Laura Smith.
Thank you guys for your time. I just kind of want to follow up on what Ms. Harris said. So I have a little personal experience with a dog that came from this situation. Mine was actually from the extreme cold. This dog certainly would have died had I not gotten her. And honestly, the owner is the dead of winter, 15 degrees, she was freezing to death. Threw her out and said, we don't want her. We're done with her. She had had puppies. They continued to let her have puppies. They kept selling them for money two days before Christmas. And once she, once they were done with her, they just discarded her. Thank goodness she made it through and she's fine. That's just an example. There's animals in this county that are 1015 in a 10 by 12 area, have one or two blue barrels that are 120 degrees now. They're living in feces and filth. And when someone goes out there to check on them, we're told, oh, they're fine. They've got shelter. Obviously, they're not fine. It's 120 degrees in that blue barrel. You can't put $15 in there. What's wrong with that process? Or they've got chains on their neck. They still don't have shade. It's a very, very minimal. They need shade. I feel like in general, the whole process has been revisited. We need something like New Hanover County's got. I think over time, it will save Brunswick County money, officers' times from all these random calls, and it's a set precedence that's given for every animal and every animal has the opportunity to survive and live productive, that life as an animal does. The one thing I can tell you, anybody that doesn't think this is animal cruelty, I challenge anybody to go out there and stay with these animals. They didn't live in feces, live in heat, live in dead of winter, no food, no water, and see how it turned out. And I really appreciate your time. I think we should look at this as a business owner in this county for 33 years. I'm very proud of this county. We're better than this and we can do better than this. If there's anything we can do as a public, we need to know what that is. We'll be more than happy to assist in any way. But I would like to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Laura Smith.
Andrew Jacobson. Did I get that name wrong? All right, Holly Long. Holly Long.
David. Holly, you at Long Slope Point. We have a monster running loose in Brunswick County. It's called the Planning Department, the Planning Board. This group of unelected officials are rubber stamping development after development in our county. They have the unique ability to destroy lives, communities, and our quality of life with no accountability for their actions. They shoot down the hard work of the planning department. They approve developments even when there are huge questions about the projects and that go unanswered. They have verbally insulted concerned citizens who speak out, but most of the time we're just ignoring them. They block work on issues such as tree and traffic ordinances. Some members of the Planning Board are in a position of reaping financial benefits from their decisions, which should be considered a conflict of interest. Brunswick County is the exception to the rule in allowing a set of unelected individuals to make such rulings. The Planning Board in most counties advise the commissioner, but not here. The Planning Board seems to be in charge. You, the commissioners, created this Frankenstein. Now it's time for you to take responsibility, either neuter the Planning Board or dissolve it altogether. Thank you.
Gerald Deeks.
My name is Gerald Delks. I live at 9025 Delks Lane, Warrigaw, North Carolina. And my question of concern and issue here is, why on my North Carolina registration that I'm paying Doja taxes on my vehicle registration? I'm not saying that I don't need it and my next of neighbor is not paying anything. I have four vehicles registered and I'm trying to figure out why I'm not paying that tax on my vehicle registration.
I can answer that if you'd like. Do you, do you live in districts? Where did you say you live?
Where?
Winniboot. Okay. What happened? Have you ever lived in the Southport area, Oak Island?
Never, never.
It's a mistake on the computer and we just need to get it corrected because he doesn't live in the district's route. You have to live in Oak Island, Southport, Eric Bahad to have a hospital tax.
Can somebody leave a card and let me follow that as something like the, we appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
It's happened several times, but.
Leanne will give you a card for a follow up and they'll get it straight now. Thanks a lot. All right. It looks like the next one is, if I get this last name right, it looks like Judy Anderson. I'm glad. Same question.
Anderson.
Anderson.
Judy Anderson, Ocean Isle Beach, Mainland. And I'm here to address two things, the roads and our evacuation plan. Specifically, roads coming into and down the Golden Beach Sunset Beach, Calabash and Ocean Mall. They're a mess. They're under air. They're old. They're outdated and they all should be wiped and just relaid before you build any more homes or any more developments. I live in Crown Street. We've got the sheriff's office closing in almost every weekend because there's a conglomine of hearts coming down Eau de, what do you call Pepper, to beat the light. What happens if one of us has a heart attack or a stroke? They can't get EMTs in because these incoming tourons won't let anybody in. That's not the address. We also have to address an evacuation plan, updated. Because like I said, our roads are old, outdated, it's still repaired. So we're going to take one car on a two lane back road with no shoulder and ditches to break down. And guess what? You're putting hundreds and thousands of lives at risk because there's nowhere for you to go. What, roll their car in a ditch? You guys really need to step up, open your oath of office and do for us, fix our roads. That's a story. Slow development, I'll get you guys on that another day. But fix our roads, update our evacuation plan and do it now. Not when there's a problem down the road, not when someone dies. Thank you.
Thank you.
In my defense, I think only the state government can say.
Yeah, I think we saw some DOT crews here earlier, isn't it? Wait, we put some pressure on them this evening, but yeah, all the roads in the counties are either, there's three types. There's state roads, there's municipal roads, and there's open roads. And the county has been, where but we will certainly, we are in touch with DOT. We just had a meeting today with DOT and our division engineer or inner division engineer. So there's discussion ongoing. And then we have, I've seen our emergency services staff here earlier, so I think knows that evacuation information is discussed because of our I got an email a few minutes ago about after action from our last storm. So I know that there are issues being discussed and plans that continue to be works in progress. So the last thing on my list is, it appears to be Terry Callum.
Holly, I live at 1247 Black Place in town. One of my biggest concerns is the construction of roads here with the infrastructure, 211. And I know that's my goal, but my other concern is they're getting 133 widened and the roads, the bridges replaced down there. And I know it's taken 35 to 40 years to get 211 four lane from Southport to Midway Road. But like the ladies have been talking about evacuation, there is no way. And y'all, they're performing this four lane to a two lane road. And you guys do not understand how many people's on 211 every day. And this overdevelopment has gotten, with this last one that we had, I'm beginning to see yellow road at the corner of Bentley Yellow Road. Ford is clear cutting everything there, always that awkward falling bridge. Okay, it ran over where the silk route was, 100 feet passed out where they're filling in. It's covered in white of 100 feet of that.
After each household, as to when they feel like it's time to leave. And again, if you're having trouble getting to the brokerage or database and you don't like sitting behind the cars, this may be the time to be here. So I just tell you to take advantage of the opportunity of time. Having said that, we've finished public comment. I'll get into the protocol of the consideration. I'll go to the second. All in favor, aye? All right, so now we get to, get to presentations. And I believe we're looking for former congressmen to come forward and give advice on that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. As always, it's great to be with you all and always wonderful to be here in Brunswick County. It's a special place to our family, as you know, and we try to get down here as often as we can. But I want to thank you so much for the opportunity to work with you all, having known you all individually and corporately in various capacities through the years and having this opportunity, these last four, going on five years to work with the county has been a great opportunity. And things have gone quite well in the work on the federal level that we've been having the opportunity to engage with you. I want to also commend your county manager, Steve Stone, who's been wonderful to work with, always available. And as he knows, I often come by here. And we'll come by and sit down and have a 30 minute or hour long meeting to go through progress of where we are on various projects from time to time throughout the year. So that we are staying quite in close touch. Also, I'm pleased tonight that Roger Gwynn, who is the CEO of the Ferguson Group, is sitting on the front row here. He'll speak briefly after I make some presentation of some highlights of our report. And he is a native of North Carolina, although he runs the Ferguson Group nationwide on research and monitoring legislation and on brands and on various ways that we tag team as we work together and advocate for projects. He's originally from Charlotte and in fact went to NC State and in fact vacations down here at the coast. So he obviously knows North Carolina very well. And Stephanie Misser, who was supposed to be here, is listening in by audio and watching by video now. She had been ill, but she's listening in and she has worked with several of your utility staff, as well as the county manager on the technical details on several of these projects to make sure that we're dotting every I and crossing every T on the level that needs to be when we're looking at trying to get these federal dollars to come back home. As you know, from our last two monthly reports, Congressman Rouse was sponsored and submitted both of our requests that were made this year on behalf of Brunswick County. And I'm going to highlight some items that were sent to the county manager and hopefully you've seen that or you have copies with you of our report. So I will not go through and read it. I'll just highlight some of the items in it for your notice with our time here tonight. But the request for Longwood Road Waterline Extension Project and the Bolivia Waterline Extension Project, both were approved by Congressman Rouse's office. And as you may know, the earmark process is we have to go and work with the staff and work with the congressional representative to convince them of the merit of projects for these earmarks. And then they only get to choose so many projects for their entire district. And usually the limit on them keeps them from being able to approve every project. It's not like anybody can walk in and just get a project approved. And so it's very rare. It's hard enough to get approval for one project, but when you get two, that's a double blessing. And that's what happened this year. We were able to work with him and get both the Longwood Road Waterline Extension and the Bolivia Waterline Extension approved. And we were thrilled with that because Brunswick County was the only entity in the entire 7th Congressional District that got two projects approved by the local congressman to even get out for consideration. So we're grateful to him and his staff for working with us to support these appropriations requests. As we look at the progress of these requests, in late June, the House Appropriations Committee had approved both of these projects to go forward. So that was another positive step that we were pleased with in moving these forward. Then their subcommittees study them in detail and decide whether to endorse them to continue the progress before the full house. And what happened was that the Longwood Road project for $5,135,000 was approved at that level as well. So the full amount, which is a major victory to get anything. So the full amount, uh which is a major victory to get anything, but then when you get the full amount, that's on top of it. Uh because we know they can decide what to do or what not to do with any request in any amount. Uh we were thrilled for the Longwood Road Waterline Extension Project to be approved. The other subcommittee that looked at the other project, which was the Interior Environment Subcommittee of the House Appropriations Committee, also approved going forward with the Bolivia Waterline. However, um they reduced the amount to one million. And that's not unusual, that subcommittee tends to do that. They tend to reduce a lot of requests down to a million just because they're trying to, you know, be conscious about federal budget and and yes, they'll approve help, but they're not going to always do it in the full amount that you asked for. And you know how those kind of tough decisions are. But the good thing is, we worked with your utility staff. And again, with the county manager and the folks in the utility staff, um and the folks at Ferguson Group going through the details of this, we adopted a strategy to not ask for both projects. They're both water line projects, they normally go through the same subcommittee. But that could have shot down one of them because you'd be unlikely to get two of them. So we did one through one subcommittee and one through the other. And so actually, to get the million dollars that we still got, that was a blessing because that might not have happened at all if we'd have dumped them both in one subcommittee. So we used a strategy to go through two separate subcommittees and sell those projects on their own merit. Um normally, these run through one subcommittee as Economic Development Initiative Project. But in this situation, we were able to get approval also through the uh state tribal, state and tribal assistant grants programs, it's called STAG from the acronym, uh Drinking Water Program. So it was a different program that we were able to get that extra million approved through. So we're delighted that both projects therefore are moving forward. And uh we are hopeful and feel very good about the status of where they are right now. Um Congress, of course, is in August recess right now, which is another reason we want to be able to come to you here at the end of the summer uh to kind of see where we are because we're closing in now at the end of the two-year session of Congress. Um Congress will go back after Labor Day, be there for a month, and then that's it. Because in October, they're going to go back home and be campaigning. Um and then, of course, after the November election, they'll go back in after Veterans Day to kind of clean things up before Christmas. And then that'll be it for the two-year session. So there's still a lot of work to be done, especially with regard to appropriations. But the good news is, is that they probably will get it done. Because uh even though the federal fiscal year starts October first, and they probably will not get it done in the next four to five weeks after Labor Day, uh with all of the different earmarks that different members of Congress and senators have from across the nation, and not knowing what the new Congress is going to look like or who's going to be in that new Congress, uh they're going to try to get done what they know. And if they know that their projects are already in the bills, they generally will try to get that work completed. Otherwise, it's all for naught and uh there could be a government shutdown and a lot of other negative things could happen. So we're optimistic that by Christmas, uh we should see this opportunity for these bills to go forward. Now, what that means is that when you get to the end of September, there'll be what's called a continuing resolution, a resolution passed by Congress to continue the current budget of FY twenty twenty-four to get you through um till the end of the calendar year twenty twenty-four and then pass the twenty twenty-five fiscal year budget. Uh we also continue to monitor the status of the twenty twenty-four Water Resource Development Act, which the acronym for that is WRA. Um I guess to kind of sound like the word water, but uh that's what it deals with is water. But the WRA bill, W R D A, uh has provisions in there that uh help the Army Corps of Engineers get authority for its projects and make sure that they have a uh work plan that is workable and that meets the needs of the projects that have been submitted from across the nation, which obviously includes our area. Uh notable about the WRA bill is the fact that it includes uh section five one one three. And I may have Roger speak to this uh in just a moment. But that's the Environmental Infrastructure Authority, or E I Authority, as it's commonly called. And that provides grants to public entities in North Carolina for water resources projects such as water, wastewater, stormwater. All sounds familiar, all sounds like great needs that we have right here in Brunswick. Um believe it or not, that has been a very little-used fund. That is separate from earmarks and it's separate from uh grants or appropriations for targeted projects, which we work on all those too. But this E I money has kind of been overlooked because it's not very much. It's thirteen million for the entire state of North Carolina. And quite honestly, a lot of the uh communities didn't know about it, haven't applied for it. Therefore, the Corps is busy enough with their other projects and they haven't been as focused on. But we brought in their attention over the last two years. We were thrilled, two years ago, there was a hundred thousand dollars that we were able to get from Brunswick County to start the process of a public partnership agreement, or P P A, as it's commonly called by the Corps, to look at how could this E I money be implemented and Brunswick County benefit from it? Well, being right next door to the Wilmington uh District Office of the Corps, uh they did take a look at it and they, we did study some opportunities. And so now, what's happened is, two years later, we're now looking at the requests we made with Brunswick County in mind. And we talked to Congressman Rouse's office about it two years ago and last year. And then right out of the gate in January this year, to try to up that amount from thirteen million to fifty million so that then Brunswick could legitimately compete and get a share of that. Yeah, there would still be some other money left, you know, if somebody else wanted to apply for it. And it worked, believe it or not, that's in the bill. And that's in the bill because Brunswick County and our initial efforts to get that done. Now, it's not what just designated for Brunswick County, obviously, it's still for the state of North Carolina. But we are pleased that that amount is in the bill. Then that we get to the House and Senate, who have different versions of the WRA bill. And uh there's talk now that the Senate may go up to sixty million. Uh there's talk that the House may drop it way down uh to about three million. Uh so uh there's going to probably be somewhere in between. But the good news is, and Roger may speak to this, is that we've got other states have now woken up to the fact that E I funding in each of their states is important. And they want to be fair and they want to increase the amount. And our congressional delegation now is aware of this. This is money, again, that is available in addition to whatever projects you may be working on, or in addition to the work Corps, the work projects that the Corps has, that you could separately apply for through this infrastructure authority. And so um we are hoping, or the Environmental Infrastructure Authority, we're hoping that this is going to be a real positive and work out well for us. Um Congress, believe it or not, the Senate on August first, um unanimously passed its version of work. Uh you don't hear that word unanimous many times now in Washington, but on the Water Resources Bill, there is agreement that something's got to be done, these four projects are that important. The House passed it on July twenty-second overwhelmingly, three fifty-nine to thirteen. So you can see there's a strong bipartisan consensus even in the House to get this done. So we are looking forward, as we now plan ahead for the next Congress and the next two years that'll be starting up in January, to uh work with your staff and work with the county manager and work with your utility staff on strategic projects that we're going to be looking at over the next two years that can help Brunswick County with all the tremendous growth, the stormwater, the wastewater, the uh water infrastructure in general, and trying to see uh what monies we can tap into and that are available for us to work with and work with our friends at the Ferguson Group who are monitoring it day by day in Washington. Uh we are also pleased that the WRA bill, uh as the Senate and House go together to resolve any differences. They're for locally-driven projects that um respond to what regional and national needs are. And they're done in such a way to also help our nation's global competitiveness, supply chain issues, and growing the economy and moving goods around the country and protecting communities from flooding and other concerns, as we mentioned, regarding wastewater and stormwater. Um the uh, there are some other variants between the Senate and House bill that they'll be going to conference. And uh given the strong support that the bill had from each chamber, we're confident that those differences will be worked out. There's one other thing that I'll point out quickly, and that is that the Environmental Protection Agency has announced that the Atlantic Conservation Coalition, which is Maryland, Virginia, North Carolina, and South Carolina, uh will be getting four hundred and twenty-one million, three hundred, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand and seventy-four dollars. That's four twenty-one million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand and seventy-four dollars for climate pollution reduction grant uh to help projects that tackle climate change, deal with air pollution, that try to help deal with the local problems. And and what we're talking about here in particular for these four states is that this Atlantic Conservation Commission is getting this money specifically for protection and restoration of coastal land, P A T, peatland, and forest lands across the four member states. So these will be uh efforts to help protect the environment. And for us, obviously, as we think about the coastal areas, uh this is an important, great start for these four states to have gotten this money. There'll be some additional money made later this year uh by, made available later this year by EPA going to some other places. But it's good to know we've already got a head start on on this year coming our way. Uh with that, I want to thank you again for the opportunity. We're, we're excited, as you can probably tell, that some of these projects that have come through the last uh four years uh go back to that very first year that we spent a long day down here and worked with uh your county staff and county manager and assistant manager and worked through and walked through with the utility staff uh as we're doing now to make sure we're ready to go and can hit the ground running once January gets here and the new Congress starts. And in the meantime, obviously, finishing up the work needs to be done this year to make these other projects a reality. Uh with that, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
The acronym P P A T.
No, no, that's peatland, that's it, that's the, I just want to make sure you understand the word I was using for peat. You know, like peat moss and that kind of thing. Um so uh Roger, do you want to share anything while we got just a few moments? Because Roger Gwynn of the Ferguson Group.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mike. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you here this evening. And uh it's a great pleasure to be, have the opportunity to work with the county, uh with Congressman McIntyre, Ward Smith. The partners we have is a, is a great one and we appreciate that uh opportunity. The uh, just want to highlight a couple of things, actually, before I do about, I want to talk about environmental infrastructure. But before I do, Congressman McIntyre mentioned the history I have with uh in your county, and I was reiterating specifically about uh coming here for most of my life, uh for at least a week or so a year, like many of your visitors, they think, uh, they come here and uh had the fortune of uh catching my first fish here on the uh, in the ocean aisle, sir, uh back uh sixty-four years ago when I was four years old. So anyway, it's a pretty long history, I'll be here in a couple of weeks with my family. But uh you got a, got a great place, I know you have a very, you know, you have a very, very special county. But uh in terms of the uh, one of the things I want to highlight was environmental infrastructure, uh which Congressman McIntyre mentioned. The uh, you were uh, this, you may have heard this in the past, but just to be clear about this, uh you were the first uh community in the state to actually access that authority. And again, this is a special authority, unique authority for the Corps of Engineers where you're allowed access, where the Corps is providing assistance on a uh, uh two non-federal entities for water and sewer and stormwater-related concerns. And uh so you access that initial increment, a hundred thousand, that's just sort of a down payment, sort of started the process creating a partnership with the Corps. A lot of our clients across the country have found that that's a very productive relationship over the long term. Nothing frankly, to be very honest, with you, with the Corps, it is fast or anything. But nonetheless, there are lots of opportunities for significant assistance over time. And as Congressman McIntyre mentioned, it's a, this is a, an area of assistance that you can get. It's, it is, you can get an earmark for this money, but you can also, as you did in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, but you can also go after come uh monies that are available to the Corps on a discretionary basis. And uh the Congressman mentioned a sixty million dollars that's pending on the Senate side for this. That's money that has not been allocated to anyone nationwide. We'll be working with your delegation, with your folks, your uh staff, uh to uh, and and working with you to advocate for adoption of that higher level of funding. And again, that's going to create an opportunity for you to go compete for money uh in fiscal year, as early as, again, this current or the upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, which starts October the one of of this county year. So again, and it's also, we'll, they will be working with you, obviously, in the future too, looking for opportunities where this uh assistance may match, uh you know, be a good fit for future requests to get through the earmark process for FY twenty-six and beyond. But anyways, it's a great opportunity uh for the county and uh it's been a pleasure uh working with you to build that up. And obviously, Congressman Rouse, it's just an honorable job on your behalf, again, pretty expanding an opportunity to go to a fifty-million-dollar allocation statewide uh in the current pending Water Resources Development Act. So again, thank you very much for the opportunity.
And to put it straightforward, me and you are the tip of the spear on this environmental infrastructure money. Uh we've got a head start on it a couple of years ago and now we're in a position to to go for it. We can, you know, convince them to accept the opportunities that are there and if there's going to be the money that we've bought on.
One question and then a couple of comments. I question you, what can we as a board of commissioners do to help you with what you're going to do? Do you need us to ever write any letters or pass resolutions? What can we do to give you even more cover with what you're working on to stay out of the way?
Well, uh as as Steve Stone knows, uh we've stayed in touch with him and with the utility staff when there are specific requirements, nodding eyes, probabilities, and meeting all the statistical information that has to be met to convince the merit of the project, you know, because on these appropriations and opportunities uh to be able to get these monies, we have to, you know, meet the test to show that you're worthy of it. Clearly, with what's happening in Brunswick County, you are, but the brokerage has got the demands. So I have to commend your wonderful staff for keeping us up to date on that. But yes, when there are needs to to write a letter at the right time, we're, we're happy to say on top of that and the value of the sign.
Just, I mean, certainly, your delegation is interested in hearing from you and uh as their, you know, their colleagues representing the constituents of the county and certainly uh opportunities can pay that in writing or in person. You know, it's very, very, very helpful, it makes, makes all the difference in the world.
Just let us know if there's a specific issue where you need us some.
Yeah, right.
On that one, these, these are issues that are not specific to Brunswick County, but I want to put them on the radar. One is, I know there's been movement to simplify FEMA's individual assistance process.
Yes.
And that's something the National Association of Counties with Brunswick County helped to push that. It's been very active in pushing, but we saw it near Florence, how complex that is. So just put that on the radar and then just, this one affects Brunswick County, but it's not specific to Brunswick County. But there's a little bridge between here and Florence that we're trying to replace. And obviously, we got a federal grant a few weeks ago, but any more money that can help off sentence costs. Maybe that is sold transitionally, please give that on the radar.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, yeah, we, we.
That's a nice tee up for the next president.
Right. Yeah, we, we have been doing that every chance we've had, yes, sir.
And uh just to know how we, help get about to the other end of the camp too. We've got discussions about me and Roger down there too. They, they call it the Carolina Party, so. Yeah, uh my guess is uh if we get any movement on it, it's going to happen down for federal dollars. So we're uh, North Carolina has their dollars of emergency money. So, so uh we're definitely, that's going to be top priority. Uh Agent Lawrence, Bert, the skeptics in our public, public session about uh roads and evacuations. Uh we need roads desperately.
Yes, sir, and I mean, having a little place down there Sunset Beach, we're very aware of that situation.
You probably, the range out down there, you probably see that traffic.
Yes, sir, sure have.
So, but anything that can be done and we really do, you know, this is really well-spent by the county. We talked about that cost. The uh, I think with, with many years of service, I think Washington, uh I think that that really, you're really sitting to be a voice for us. And we, we do appreciate the work and relationship that you have established with the current representative. And that, that brilliant, true, shed it to the professionals. We represent, so.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I want to thank both of us, uh that after my wife and I were first married, we lived in a area and the uh county war. And we got all in, you know, initially, you know, production, I'll be a child, a child, we also, so we had all our weapons. And we had water, we had golly, it tasted a lot better, we had a friend of them, everything else we had. Then when we played off road because of the freeze, the light all burned out. Having, having county order and business asset, it was, I mean, it was a lot of desperation, the pressure, everything associated with it. So even though we're looking at it from a local standpoint, thank you because this helps so many people who really don't even know, you know, what it's like to have the things that we take. So thank you, thank you both.
Yes, sir. I was going to say, there is a good cooperative, I'm glad you mentioned about our working relationships with Congressman Rouse because there's a good situation. Uh we also uh bring these to the attention of the senators. And um what happens, it's happened generally, a lot of times, is Senator Tillis's office will work with Congressman Rouse on who's going to put which request forward because they don't want to use it, both use it the same request, you know? If uh one of them can make the request and the other one. If one of them can make the request and the other one, and we have found that they have worked together as well in our discussing these issues with. Senator Tillis and with Congressman Rouser and how they try to work their staff and make sure that the issues are being covered. We need her right here. And then Senator Bud, I know contacted some of our coastal communities right after Debbie came through. And we are following up with his office even now about things like the environmental infrastructure money. Because that's not a regular earmark. I know he he doesn't work the earmarks like the other ones do. But something like the environmental infrastructure money is additional money that, you know, that you can compete for. And so that's something that we're hoping to discuss with you, but also to see the Senate. Have that overall authority be raised so that more folks like regimental community people, because you're in such a strong position to do that. So we feel very good about our working relationship with Senator Bud's office and Senator Tillis's office as well. I want to acknowledge their willingness to be available and to work with us in addition, obviously, to Congressman Rouser. Right. Yeah, he's exactly right. Exactly right.
And thank you. Thank you both so much. I wish I would.
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you all. God bless you. Thank you all so much.
All right, let's go to the next document. Since it be a team, we can say what very great project there to be.
As I come up, I want to say we talked about this project at the RPO meeting on Friday. This is something that is going to be very impactful for people in Brunswick County and and something we definitely need to talk about.
Good evening. My name is Dan Convo with N C D O T. I'm with the Division Construction Unit. I'm the Assistant Division Construction Engineer. And also with me tonight is Anthony Law, a Division Construction Engineer. And Katie High with the Project Development. So this project is located on N C one thirty-three River Road. Near Funston Road between Belleville and Southport. The project is replacing several pipes to the north of Funston Road with a bridge. And then to the south of Funston Road, a pipe is being upsized and made larger or replaced with another pipe. So this slide just gives an overview of from a couple of our plan sheets with the project. There's a little overview there. Couple of pictures from out on site. The picture on the left is the area where the new bridge were reconstructed. And the picture on the right is the area where the pipe replacement will occur. And so you can see both of these locations have a large areas of asphalt overlays due to repairs in past, you know, past storms. So the scope of the work first is starting off with the location north of Funston Road. Let's see, this is again the one that's going to be constructing a bridge and replacing several pipes that are currently under the road. The bridge is going to be thirty-three and a half feet wide, three hundred and eighty feet, eighty-eight feet in length. And the bridge, when it's constructed, will be about five feet higher than the existing road is now. So, you know, major storm events now flood the road with water in the area of two to three feet of depth of water. The second location, the location to the south with the pipe replacement, that project or that part of the project. The scope of the this, the scope of the work there will be replacing a sixty-inch pipe. Under the highway with a new eighty-four inch core gated aluminum pipe. So part of the process for the construction at this location includes in in the red that you see on the screen. This, this is a two and a half foot deep surcharge area. That's going to require a minimum of three months waiting period prior to the installation of the new pipe. So basically that two and a half feet of field material will be placed. And it's on the right side, that area that's shown in the rectangle, that's where that field will be placed. Basically, this just applies pressure to the to that area. So that it will not have the settlement of that field section over, you know, later on down the road. So it's this is just part of the method that's required due to the soft soils conditions in this area. So in this location of the pipe replacement. It's the final road surface elevations will be approximately three, three and a half foot higher than the current road is now.
How deep does the flooding get in that area during a typical storm event? I know you mentioned two to three feet in that area. Is it the same there?
Um, I would say that it's a little less than that area, I'd say.
And quick question. I'm sure you've done the full state. Obviously, this is going to move more water.
Yes, sir.
What area is going to be impacted by moving more water? You know, I didn't ask that for a couple of seconds.
So the question is.
Yeah, if if we're going to be moving more water, in other words, apparently the the smaller pipe is causing the flooding. Of the existing roadway, existing area. So now we're going to enlarge the pipe, which means we're going to be putting flow of water increase into the area that has downstream. So what's going to be the impact of increasing a sixty-inch line to eighty-four inch line? On the downstream? I I'm asked, I guess I'm asking, is it going into the river? Is it going into wetlands? Is it going into residential areas?
That's what we're watching downstream. Yeah, we'll be affected by it.
Yeah, well, just I can say that I was not part of the hydraulic design. But just, you know, I was trying to flip back to look at one of his screens. I've I flipped back down to this one. So it kind of shows the, you know, the bridge on the north and the pipe replacement on the south. And while it's adjacent to some residential areas, it is going into that wetlands and sand hill creek. As you can see on the screen there. Which is. That's right.
I guess that's what I'm really trying to get at is there were, I realize that there's a professional group within N C D O T. That looks at the wetlands and the flow of the water. So it's one of my career, we're all clear that that has occurred with this project. There cannot well be an impact on residents of.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
That's one where I was, I'm glad there's some correlation with this original vision, which are a little five feet, three and a half, but. Oh, I think, I think based upon all that, it's like a year ago, we're talking about that. But I think it was five, check it out. Is this going to mediate to the five of the R D? I think no, I think there's five over. So this is pretty much a media, just two of them.
Yes, sir. We were actually discussing that, you know, in advance of this meeting. So and we were talking about three additional ones and the ones we were speaking of were further north of this location. So yes, and based on our discussions, we had kind of the same number as you did. This will, this will be providing some corrective measures at two of the five. And we're going to continue to work, just like we did with these locations with our hydraulics unit. In determining what can be, what kind of project is needed and 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 then look towards funding and, you know, just kind of the same thing. Continue to to work on one thirty-three because it is an important route.
I just still believe that's when I came to office sixteen years ago, I remember that Unity Road began one mortality about a month. There must be three bridges that were there and we got a lot of road, placed the bridges and I think it's been a lot of, I don't know, the mortality. So you guys have done a lot of great work. My hope is that we can make sure that those other three are going to be, are going to be needed as well. To, you know, have an issue, we have the ability to get in that lot easier than we have really been.
Yes, sir. We will continue to be working through those as well.
Aside from further, I'm sorry, the roadway is two pictures of the road. And I I'm sure on thirty-three gets it shared of shared use of bicycles. So I'm hoping that when the new portions are put in, that we are like, because the shoulders, the two pictures that you showed. Didn't look like they were very wide to accommodate in any additional second traffic. I mean, it's it's just like I tell a lot of people, I have the counties, ride by, stick by, ride on the road. Certainly, God, we will be, but it's, you know, that is something I hope you all take into consideration. I know as they're replacing the cowback where it's currently in the camp with kind of a fan, it's moving along, it's good, right? Time traffic should look in, in his bonus for the fling over the collision bands. I would hope that y'all are looking at some expansion of the roadway to to provide that extra curbing or opportunity for. At least in this area, so we can step back in, try to talk about making sure that we have some paths as well as for shared roads.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure how many buses are in this area.
I don't think it's that many, to my knowledge. I travel quite a bit.
I know in our way, that's that's the heat, but when we those where we've got the small shoulders, even with new construction. I use old George Town Road as an example. I mean, that's a fairly huge extension of the road. That it doesn't provide for that road shoulder to to allow for that extra lane. So we didn't have a lot of accidents, a lot of casualties, wheels, bicycles. So just throw that out as we're moving forward anything, we can look at the safety concerns. That's what we're going to.
Yes, sir. And on the bridge, on that typical section, you can see there, there is a five foot of shoulder across the bridge on each side. So that that would accommodate just what you're speaking of.
That's right. What you do, do the shoulder on each side like that, but without any. Yeah, the bottom of the sleeping belt.
That's probably so much too, but it's on the bridge.
But you got the shoulder in that photo, you got the shoulders. Yeah, who wouldn't know what I used to do is certainly there is my shoulder there, you know, a bloodline on the other side. But it looks like a great product.
So.
Yeah, we have to talk about how long the road is.
Even on the, even in the area of the pipe replacement, there there will also be paved shoulders. You know, the the only problem with this, this is, you know, a half a mile project, you know what I mean? So it's not, you know, that's.
Are you going to, are you going to detour it or can you do this much?
Yeah, I will. This is coming up right now. So this is kind of a general area of the road construction in in yellow. And so this, both N C one thirty-three and Funston Road will be closed through traffic during construction. Like I said, it's about half a mile of roadway on N C one thirty-three and then Funston Road will be closed at the intersection of one thirty-three. So Funston Road will will not be accessible from one thirty-three and, you know, on Funston Road. That will will not be able, you would not be able to access N C one thirty-three. So this basically shows the off-site detour in green, the road being closed, N C one thirty-three in red. On the right in in blue, there is kind of the area that we're talking about. Of the blue circle, you know, on on the right side for one thirty-three. And then so the off-site detour is using N C eighty-seven and U S seventeen.
Before you get off of that slide, for people who knew the area, they could take Dolls Creek and come down. That is a bad way to cut through others. Would that be? Because I'm just, that's a very long detour. That's kind of where you're going.
Well, like you say, locals can figure some things out as far as routes that they may take. But when we sign and close and sign for an official detour like this on a primary highway. We're we're assigning that to to another primary route. So that that traffic that is used to traveling on a primary N C U S type route. You know, we're detouring them back on to that similar type of roadway. So that's why you see our detour like that. That's what, that's what we will sign with detour signs at the rest of the records and with our, you know, public involvement information as well.
I think so. Usually they just can't go through that area that's going to be.
That's right.
So where is the old Ford golf course?
It's it's. It's, I think it's north. Yeah, it's it's north, just north of Funston.
Just barely.
I thought it was sound. But some outside of the day, they look like here the construction, they can still get to that business.
I think one of the locations that we were talking about that was a flooding spot was near there also. But it was north, I'm pretty sure.
It's it's a little bit north.
It's north of Funston. It's right with bridges.
Bridges. If you think about Dolls Creek, Funston's dirt. Yes, it's right here.
Can I ask you, I was thinking, is there any existing projects coming in seven or in that time?
I'm sorry.
Will there be any? Will there be any existing projects coming?
I have two, but.
What color better? Will there be any projects ongoing during that time, highway and seven?
So we do, we do have a paving project, a resurfacing project on N C eighty-seven. But what we're, what we're planning to do is. Is prior to the detour and and this project starting, we're going to have them do patching, do all the, you know, worst spots to get that road patched in. But as far as racks, the project's going to be widening and resurfacing of N C eighty-seven. But we're going to wait and have that work, the bulk of the project work completed after this is this project is completed. So so that I guess to answer your question is no. And then, you know, a few, a few years later, we have another big bridge replacement. On N C eighty-seven that will be coming up in the future, but it will not conflict with this project, this near Bulling Springs place.
Is that where, is that where the lake is where it goes way down and then it goes back up? Is that not the bridge on our question? So we'll talk about south of the road. Okay, okay, that's good.
Okay, so this is just some information on the schedule. This project being available to the contractor to begin construction October twenty-eighth this year. Completion August first of next year. But this project, you know, realizing the importance of this road, the hurricane evacuation route, nuclear evacuation route. The contract was approved to include some incentives, disincentives to be part of the contract language. So for the incentive, there's an incentive payment of five thousand dollars a day. With a maximum payment of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the contractor. If he finishes early, earlier than that. if he finishes early earlier than that August first. So to meet the maximum payment, the project would be would have to be completed on or before May eighteenth. So in that that timeframe, that May eighteenth, this is like two and a half months early, just to give you a count of reference, seventy-five days is what we're. To get that maximum incentive. The disincentive is similar, same amount, five thousand a day for every day beyond that completion date of August first. So obviously, we we hope that the contractor will finish early and we're trying to incentivize that. That's that's pretty much all I have, but we really appreciate the opportunity to come and share with you about this project.
Thank Dan, thank you. And I do have a few comments. Not being on the MPO and the RPO, I was involved in the communication for getting regarding the Cape Fear Bridge closure that happened recently. I think in terms of its impact on people going from Leland to Southport, this is a smaller scale version of that same closure in terms of the type of impact it could have. So I think we've really got to double down on the communication. One thing I would share is after some of the storms, when people put up road clothing because there was water on the road, not everyone obeyed. So I would certainly communicate with our sheriff's office because you you may have been trying to drive through your products because I want people to drive through flooded roads right there where you're parking. They pull up, go through water that almost came into a pretty high high G and went right on through. So that's something I would certainly look at. I would like to see us get all the stakeholders that are going to be or the major stakeholders that are going to be affected by this in one room. And I will share my thoughts and clerk put these in the minutes on top of this Brunswick County schools. Because I don't know how this will affect bus routes, but they need to be involved in this before that happens because that is critical that they know about that. Brunswick County Sheriff's Office certainly, someone from Duke Energy because their employees use that as a major thoroughfare back and forth. Same with eighty, Archer Daniels Midland. All the towns and the mayor of Bulling Spring Lake specifically brought up that potential club paving projects. So all the towns that are affected by it, Commissioner Forte just mentioned Military Ocean Terminal at Sunny Point. And Brunswick County EMS and Emergency Management says this could run through hurricane season next year. I'm hoping they cash in that incentive and get it done. But those are just some of my thoughts. And I think, you know, we have an excellent communication staff in Brunswick County that can certainly help get the word out on that. I would ask that your staff coordinate with them because I don't know anyone. It's better getting the word out in Brunswick County than our communications team. They've done that work. So one question I do have, obviously, the one thirty-three widening and Bellville's wrapping up now. I know it's a different label and they look like they added a lane here while they were working on a lane here. Is there any option to add temporary passage through there as opposed to just closing?
For this bridge project?
Either the bridge or the or the other one, you just whether it's a temporary passage around where they're working so you don't have to route people all the way around. I'm guessing the answer is probably no, but I thought I would ask.
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, there's there's not really, really because of the, you know, the bridge itself, that that would be, you know, a lot more.
I just wanted to ask just to make, I mean, I figured you had thought of that and get considered, but I wanted to get it out on the other.
Yes, sir.
That was part of our. This should pay a little bit asking this.
Steve, I'm sure if that would be willing to host that stakeholder meeting here with.
Any other questions? Thank y'all so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right. And now we'll turn to the public to just kind of share our resolution.
Now we'll read the resolution with the caveat, and there's one paragraph that mentions me, and that's always a little awkward reading a resolution that has your name in it. With that, this is a resolution declaring September twenty twenty-four as preparedness month in Brunswick County. Whereas National Preparedness Month is an observance fee September to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for disasters and emergencies that could happen at any time. And whereas counties throughout North Carolina have been affected by a variety of emergencies, including hurricanes, tornadoes, mudslides, wildfires, flooding, and earthquakes. And whereas the peak of hurricane season is historically mid-August through October, and September tenth marks the peak of hurricane season. And whereas Brunswick County has already been affected by tropical storm Debbie in twenty twenty-four. And whereas Brunswick County Commissioner Frank Williams, past president of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, created the one hundred counties prepared for NCACC Presidential Mission. And whereas all five Brunswick County Commissioners, three members of the Brunswick County Management Team, and several members of Brunswick County's Emergency Services Team have now completed the one hundred counties prepared training, which focuses on training county commissioners to help effectively lead during emergencies, compiling resources to assist commissioners during emergency situations, and helping commissioners establish relationships with key emergency management partners. And whereas at the time of the writing of this resolution, Brunswick County had the highest percentage of adults over the age of sixty-five in North Carolina. Understand that name that changed in the book since then. And whereas Brunswick, the Brunswick County Board of Commissioners desires that every household, property owner, and business in Brunswick County be prepared for potential emergencies. Now therefore being resolved that the Brunswick Board of Commissioners of Brunswick County hereby declare this September twenty twenty-four as preparedness month in Brunswick County and encourage all citizens to prepare for potential emergencies by developing an emergency plan, building an emergency kit, identifying sources for credible, accurate emergency information, and communicating their emergency plan to all members of their household and their workloads. Done with this nineteenth day of August twenty twenty-four, signed Randy Thompson, Chairman, Brunswick County Board of Commissioners, and I'll move approval. And for our members of the media, I would draw your attention to the specific things in that where there will be a resolve, and we hope people will do it. That if there's anything you picked up from this, I hope it will be the things that we want people to do, get a kit, get a plan, identify good sources for information.
All right. So we'll move on to our public hearings now.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the thing is, I think a lot of times we, you know, I'm tired of calling tests to this, and I didn't even pretend to read y'all this, but they run the model. Then they run, you know, what is the the gas brakes of the back which are awesome. They back type it. Start a conference call, they do the virtual web, you know, what do you see, they do everything way ahead of schedule. But the problem is especially in this two point one is when the municipality is coming in. A lot of times they want really big tall shots, but they're a little miss filed to backdoor. And I'm saying anybody here, hang on, but I'm saying prior to you, which I think is to the first year, sometimes municipalities with some resentment to call them evacuation. The county can't force them to evacuate, as you all know. The second thing is, we told everyone we knew something really bad was coming, what to do, we told them leave or tell them to lose their place, and they wouldn't do it. And as President Trump said, if the last of this storm again, he said, I specifically believe on the airboat getting people off their set up for work on their houses because they knew better than to leave. And that being said, if we say get out, we may get out. If we say shelter place, we need shelter place. But like you stated, people have a factor in themselves, and if they don't take actions, unfortunately, there's not a lot we can do about it. So and we're coming in a little time of season, so that's a that's something I hope people will be ready, positive up for.
And I think one one point about that is is that you got to remember that it's not just residents moving to Brunswick County. All the surrounding areas are just as impacted by new growth. And and the roads in those other counties unfortunately have not gotten any better over the years either. So you're you're running into difficulties and challenges with evacuations. Not just related to Brunswick County, but south of you are going to die. So and then in even if you take a trip to Raleigh, Blountley, or Charlotte, you you traffic situations are not even better there. So it's time and visiting. So just be mindful of that. Well, I think we've got in public hearings this evening.
Good evening. The first text amendment is related to above-ground swimming pools. And it's to amend Article five, section five point four point eight point A A one to clarify that above-ground pool fencing is not required for above-ground pools at least four feet in height if the ladder is removed or the ladder has a gate when not in use. This is the language, our language is very vague. And so the proposed language clarifies and is consistent with the North Carolina Building Code. What I'm going to do is read a staff summary, which will include a a consistency statement in which you can adopt with your motion. Staff recommends approval of the pool-related text amendments based upon the information provided in the Blueprint Brunswick Twenty Forty Comprehensive Plan, Camelanus Plan. Planning Board recommended approval of the text amendments as well. This is the consistency and reasonable determination statement or consistency statement. The request is consistent with the goals, recommendations, and policies of the following plans, which is the Blueprint Brunswick Twenty Four Comprehensive Plan by Brunswick County and is reasonable and appropriate based upon the following findings. One, consistent with the North Carolina Building Code, and two, clarifies above-ground pool fencing requirements in the Unified Development Rooms. And you have to hold a public hearing.
I did not have anyone sign on the sheet that was outside of the sign. Does anyone here speak about above-ground pools? Seeing none here, ain't nothing else. Welcome to come in here and talk for. I have just this situation happened just before I moved from up north. It was a three-foot pool and somebody's joy. An adult over and by and literally walking through the pool and cover. And it was too many we needed to get out of. And they drowned. I see that if it's a four-foot pool, they don't have to do it. But at a three-foot, they do it. I a hundred percent agree with this. A three-foot pool is very easy. I feel it's just above waist high. You just stop right in. Particularly if you're drinking martinis or alcohol. I'm sure everybody has something to say, but I'd certainly make a motion.
I'll second. Did not see the consistency statement in their agenda package. Does that need to be included till minutes?
I read it and it is and it's in your packet, but I read it.
Is there further to go? Here you go. We got motion and second all over, right? Very good. All right. So now we're going to the next one about board adjustments.
The second one is also a housekeeping item. It's a text amendment to amend Article two, section two point four point one point B one to increase the number of alternate board members from two to three for the Board of Adjustment. This will ensure the Board of Adjustment has a forum of four sitting members at meetings if the current members are unavailable. Currently, there are five regular members and two alternate members, and this would increase it to one. And I'm going to read the staff summary and and consistency statement. Staff recommends approval of the Board of Adjustment Alternative Members Text Amendment based on information provided in the Blueprint Brunswick Twenty Forty Comprehensive Plan or the Camelanus Plan. Planning Board recommended approval of the zoning Board of Adjustment Alternative Member Text Amendment as well. The consistency statement is, the request is consistent with the goals, recommendation, and policies of the following plans, which is the Blueprint Brunswick Twenty Forty Plan, and is reasonable and appropriate based upon one, better support the zoning Board of Adjustment meeting facilitation, and two, address the zoning Board of Adjustment workloads.
Open the public hearing. And everyone sign up for the side later. For adjustments.
Is the purpose of this because we have?
Yes, we have.
I'll second, and if we can make sure that everybody needs appointments, come back up and we get your attendance record.
But it's not just the forum. For the Board of Adjustment passing qualified initial hearings. And you need four fifths of the votes passed. Some of the situations where there's four people to show up, which is the forum. Uh, applicants will choose to postpone because of five people there, they may still be able to get one oh and get the. Right. So some of them, several of the canceled meetings have been because they had a forum, but they didn't have a forum.
Okay, that's nice.
Still be good to get the attendance records if there's anybody that's a product, yes, Steve worked in my career.
And that's good for all of our reports. All right. So we've got motion and second all over, right? Very good. All right. So moving to outdoor RV parks.
Yes. So this is a unique text amendment. This amendment amends outdoor RV resorts. So it's kind of like the campground, but for RVs, section five point three point eight C seven. And then it's to allow the RV travel trailers to have an accessory use, a site-built casita, if you may, on a campsite. And so there is a number of specifications and requirements related to it. So for example, on any campsite, the casita, neither the casita nor the recreation vehicle may be rented separately from one another and must be used together as a single rental. The recreation vehicle accessory casita must be used on the same campsite. And all recreational vehicles and casita campsites must be connected to public one. This is a trend that's going on nationally, and this actually is a request by an applicant. The applicant request is from CCMR LLC or Barry Cool, who's here tonight and will speak following my presentation. We received the application on June June tenth, twenty twenty-four. The application went to planning board. Planning board made extra some adjustments to clarify that that the the RV campsites must be on the same site and cannot be rented separately. So they made some clarifications. I will read a summary to you as well as a recommendation. Planning staff recommends approval of the outdoor RV resort casita U D O text amendment based upon information provided in the Blueprint Brunswick Twenty Forty Comprehensive Plan, Light and Plan Use Plan. The Planning Board recommends approval of the outdoor RV resort casita U D O text amendments. The request is consistent with the goals, recommendation, and policies of the Brunswick Blueprint Twenty Forty Comprehensive Plan. And this is reasonable and appropriate based upon the following, enhances economic development tourism opportunities and clarifies that conceded can be used in outdoor RV resorts. We've got asked for this several times throughout the time. I also want to note that there is an amendment to add casita to the definition section as well.
To the box.
To the definition section.
Ask your question how long we're going to follow you. Go ahead. There's a word there we don't see in my life. We got cabins, casitas, cabins, yards.
It's it's like a platform tent. And we actually have a definition for that. It's like a, it's a tent, but it's not a platform, so it's not on the ground. It is like a decking. No, they're they're more permanent. They do have them regionally as well. The applicant is going to be providing a presentation on more encasitas and his experience.
I've never heard this word. I had to look it up. I'm used to RV or motorhome, something having something built onto it, but this is unattached to it.
Correct.
So how does that work? You've got someone looking at this RV or some type of dwelling. Now this is not attached to it, so.
Correct. No, it's not attached, but it allows somebody that owns a RV to come and pull in their RV and live partly in their RV and partly in their casita, which could include a kitchen. It could include some bedrooms. Correct. Sometimes there is overhead that's covered with the overhead. Yeah.
And and we're saying no greater than a hundred square feet?
A thousand, a thousand square feet. Twelve hundred. Hold on, let me relook it up.
If you go into that place on eighty-seven, it's shut back the wood.
Yes, but I didn't know what square foot issue was going to be. It says a hundred to go there.
The it would more be like twelve hundred square feet would be what a casita size would be. It would be the size of a small home.
I think the hundred square feet is for detached storage structure.
That's correct. That's for the attached storage structure.
Okay, ready?
Yep.
Yes. We'll open the public hearing. It's very, oh.
Uh, my name is Barry Cool and, uh, I own, uh, the, uh, what's going to be the Carolina Coastal Motor Coach Resort is our plan here. And the reason for the text amendment is we have built, uh, and can I give you these to show you what we've built? Okay. We've built motor coach resorts in Virginia, North Carolina, Mountains, two different resorts up there, one in Puntagordo, Florida. And what we do is, is a little different. It's, uh, it's motor coach only. They come in, they can have a pad with utilities, everything for their motor coach. They can also, they'll have a small, and wherever we build them, it's been different. It's been a cabin in the mountains. It's been a casita in Florida. It's a small home or house to accompany that. The reason you have that is in the motor coach, lots of these people will stay for six, eight months at a time. And you can't have a guest in a motor coach. So they, they have families that come visit, they have friends that come and visit, and they have a, a guest house, basically is what these are for, for their, for their friends to come visit. Also, it serves as, as a, an extra kitchen, which is important when you're in a motor coach for six months. Kitchens are small and it gives them that opportunity. So it just adds to the value. We, we, these are not usually rented. We sell these lots. They own them individually. And normally they will use them, uh, seasonally. Sometimes you're around, mostly seasonally. A lot of people have one in Florida. They'll have one in the mountains. We're hoping they have one at the coast now. And what, what she will give you shows you the casitas we've done in all the different places. They're all different. Depending on, you know, when they're in the mountains, they look one way. When we're in Florida, they look another way and, uh, but we've got about five different resorts we've built. We're a very small company. Uh, it's a family company. Uh, we are also, my wife and I just became residents of this county as of two weeks ago.
Let me ask you a question.
Thank you.
Got, let's, who builds them and are they brought in?
No, we build everything stick-built.
What is some of that cost? I mean, what is it, what are you looking at?
Most of, most, our construction cost right now on, on these running about $300 a square foot. So a, a thousand square foot unit would be about 300,000. That's for the, for the actual house. There's obviously the cost of the land and.
That's, I mean, my day.
Yeah. Yeah. We've built some very large ones, some as small as 150 square feet in the mountains. We've built as, as large as 1,700 square feet. And we build by all building codes, you know, we get a permit just like anyone else. Everything's built to code.
Definitely upstairs. We need to back.
Yes, thank you. While you're looking, I, I gotta say one other thing. I've worked in a lot of counties and in five different states now. The planning staff here, Ms. Dixon and the planning staff have been great working with us to work through this process. I give them a lot of credit.
Thank you. So we like, this is like a residence, this having had a vote on.
It is. The reason, it basically is, I say we build neighborhoods where you could stay in your coach if you want, because in most neighborhoods, the first thing they do is restrict that you cannot bring an RV or a motor coach into it, into a nice residential area. Uh, and so this basically allows them to where if they want to be there, they can be there just in, in their coach and, and have the utilities hooked up to that and stay in their coach and live in that. Or they can also have this casita and they can use it. So they have an either or, or both.
Not only would this be supported to the RV or, or whatever you're currently, but it seems like this is a much larger structure and would be more, it is a term structure.
It, yes, it depends on the resort we're doing it to, how large they are. Here we're looking at probably units that are about a thousand square feet of indoor space, heated, heated and airspace.
And you're going to do all this on 72 acres?
No, no, it's 49 acres. The, the lake is nineteen, the lake is nineteen. Yes. Yes.
This is off of Cedar Road?
Pardon me?
Is this off of Cedar Road?
Yes, ma'am. It's an old rock quarry. And one benefit there, we already have the lake and that's a beautiful lake. If you've seen it, it stays blue all the time. And also it's already cleared all around. There's really, we would really be doing hardly any clearing.
And all the beaches, are the beaches going to be there or clubhouse?
We will build all those. Yes.
And this will be getting. Will it be getting?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Cool. I'm impressed. I didn't think it was.
I was thinking this was just some structure within the life of people. Something would be out there.
I have hooked it up and it's living for us.
I, I read it and said, and I thought, okay, is that, well, yeah. It's an accessory residence, cannot be classified as a permanent residence. So, yeah. Temporary house.
Yes.
About a million, ten million dollars in this, you know, to, uh, I'm assuming in a, into purchasing their property and and they, the, I hope, or they, well, yeah, the RV, purchasing what you're offering. The RV is there, so purchasing what you're offering. Uh, I'm assuming that there should be a costly amenity, so.
They will, there'll be a, a homeowners association, just like any other neighborhood and, and they'll pay a certain amount because usually we maintain all the grounds. And also obviously the, the clubhouse and pools and pickleball courts, all that. It's, it's an amenity fee, just like, just like any other HOA.
I heard you mention, uh, Florida and mentioned mountains. How many of these have been done?
Uh, four, but in one of those that we're doing up in Roaring Gap, North Carolina right now, uh, it's a large, uh, thing. So we have four different villages in that one of different, but, but they're all in motor coach. And that's within an existing, uh, uh, resort there.
Right. In fact, you find a lot of people will have one of these in the mountains and then they'll take their RV and they have, have two or three of these and that's how they jump around and have multiple residences.
My, my hope from this, to be quite honestly, is we build in Florida, we build in the mountains and we have people that go back and forth. Florida though, in South Florida right now, it, it's getting quite a negative hit and a lot of people are wanting to get out. It has gotten too crowded. And we really are, we really thinking that this could be, uh, a nice alternative from, instead of going to Florida. A lot of people, when they come south, they're from Michigan or, or Ohio. So the temperature here, when I looked it up compared to Michigan, pretty good, even in the winter.
I'm impressed with you from Florida. I mean, I haven't looked around a bit and have.
Yeah. Yeah.
We have quite a few residents that decide to stay about half way.
Yeah. And there, and there is not a resort like this from, from Florida to, uh, until you get two hours in the mountains. There's, there's not another one like this.
I, I know I have a rental place and a lot of them, when they come in, want to know where they can go.
Yeah.
It's not there.
Yeah. It's not there.
This. Pretty good. Anything else you want?
I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm impressed. When, when, uh, as soon as all this goes through, when you start construction?
As soon as I can get through the next, we, we will have to get a special use permit. And as soon as we get that, we, all the engineering is well underway and meeting with the, I forget what it's called, T O.
TRC.
TRC. We're going through that right now.
Okay.
And, uh, so as soon as that's, we're ready to go.
We wish you the best of luck.
We've, we've moved, we've moved here just to do this. So.
This is right.
Okay. Thank, thank you for your time.
We, you know, this is something very special. We'd like to hear an update about that as we move forward with the spread.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
All right. So we will, uh, close the public hearing and it's already written, it's definitely up here.
That will move the rules.
Second.
Second, all is that? Hi, hi, hi. Very good. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's great.
All right. So now let's move forward. And I think we, early on, we did the mental health vacancies and human service vacancies. We told you those were not left open to county, state, uh, decision.
It's a two of the way I read it is one for commissioner and one for public. Is that correct?
Commissioner must be appointed and one general public, even though on the application listed, that was dependent by the districts, just so they could do where they were, where they lived. If they're not district driven alone.
I will move to, um, reappoint Commissioner Cook and for the commissioner spot and to appoint Art Dawn Bell for the public spot. His levels, I like reading, uh, my voice also associated with Mr. Dawn Bell's service station, uh, within the best for its management to the year, so I can't hit the first of their faults. He's a. That's like, that's a seven.
All right. So I got a question. The second, in front of the sketch. Can you not open it up? All right. All right. Is there any other business in front of the sketch before we get to our paneling part? Can you not? Well, can you serve the bug study?
Get a motion to enter in a closed session for consult with attorney and personnel.
So move.
Second. Right in the second, I'll play it up.
Nothing to report, sir, thankfully.
What? Do I hear one more?
So move.
Second. I'll open it up.